Called us meeting order. Be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors hereby enters into closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following. On the section.
Okay, we do, Mr. Chair, we do have an addendum for the closed meeting. Addenda, okay. And I'll be glad to read them if you'd like, or.
Well, we do have an addendum before we go on, and to add to our closed meeting is a discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purpose, or of the disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. Four is former Texas Hollow Road Park. Five Ellison LaFayette Industrial Park. And also for the discussion and consideration of interviews, prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline, or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees, and that is the Social Services Board. And add to delegation the Virginia Association of Counties, VACO. And go back and for section.
Need a motion and a.
And a motion to accept the.
Addendum.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Five ayes.
Thank you. Be it resolved that Board of Supervisors hereby enters into closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following: Discussion concerning a prospective business or industrial, or the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcements have been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facility in the community. That is Project 2013-010. Also discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purpose, of the disposition of publicly held real property whereas the discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. And not only addendums four and five, but here's one, two, three. Courthouse property, Old Prices Fork property, Old Prices Fork Elementary School, Allegheny Springs Consolidated Site. We had a motion on the addendum, but we didn't have a motion to go for closed meeting.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
We are now in closed meeting.
Here is your anthem card.
Oh, yeah, I read it.
Now we're having a blast.
That is really weird, the card.
Need a motion to come out of closed meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Five ayes.
Okay. Certification of closed meeting whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to the affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act whereas section 2.23711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting in which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Do I have a?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Five ayes.
Before we move to implication, I'd like to mention that our Chair of Supervisors lives has a family illness that he's dealing with and will not be with us tonight. Now, we will observe a moment of silence and then be led by the pledge by Mr. Metz.
Let us pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
Our next item on the agenda is delegation and it's a Summit Place Residential Supportive Living Facility, Kristen Snyder, Summit Place.
Good evening. My name is Kristen Snyder, and I'm the Summit Place Community Outreach Coordinator. As many of you know, the New River Valley Home Consortium has played a key role in both funding and supporting Summit Place. As a reminder, the New River Valley Home Consortium is a regional consortium comprised of the counties of Montgomery, Floyd, Giles, Pilaski, and the city of Bradford. The consortium comes together to receive federal funds in order to support low to moderate income housing. Summit Place is a new opportunity for the New River Valley. My purpose is to give you information about it to spread to New River Valley residents. Construction has begun this summer, and it is scheduled to open in the spring of 2014. So supportive living is similar to assisted living, just more affordable. It offers the same services, services such as daily meals, assistance with housekeeping and laundry, assistance with daily living activities, assistance with medication, transportation to various sites such as shopping malls or hospital. They also offer planned social activities. Staff will work with each resident to determine what level of services they need and help them in whatever way they can. Like I said before, Summit Place will serve New River Valley residents. First priority goes to Giles County residents because it is located in Rich Creek, Virginia. Second priority will go to all New River Valley residents, and third priority to everyone else. While priority does go to Giles County residents, not all residents will be Giles County citizens. The building will have 23 rooms. They're private rooms. It'll have a safe landscaped central courtyard. It'll have a common dining and lounge area, and it'll be very energy efficient in order to minimize operating costs. This is the building plan layout. As you can see, the 23 rooms surround a central courtyard and a central dining and living area. This is a layout of a room. The rooms are fully furnished, but residents will have the option to bring some of their furniture as long as it doesn't violate fire code. There'll be private rooms with fully accessible private bathrooms, and residents will have the option, if they're married, they can share a room with their loved one, but if they're married and they want a little more space, they can open the door between two rooms and share that with their loved one. And if somebody wants to have a roommate, they also have that option. The reason Summit Place is affordable is because the fees are determined on an all-inclusive sliding income scale. Because it is low to moderate income, the applicant's income must fall between $14,560 and $29,120. And as you can see in the table, that's the range of income with the fee they would pay per month, and that fee includes services and rent. Residents will sign a one-year lease, and the only way they would get dropped, the only way they would get penalized for dropping the lease is if they don't, if it isn't because of sickness or change in health condition, change in ability to pay, that kind of thing. We do have preliminary applications available. They're on our website, Summit Place Auto Work. And as I said before, funding sources, the New River Valley Home Consortium, Virginia Community Development Block Grant, Virginia Home Funds, and private grants obtained by Community Housing Partners. Community Housing Partners is the contractor and architect for the project. There'll also be few waivers for the town and the county. Our hope in presenting you this information is that you can take this new opportunity and share it with your communities. If you feel any questions about Summit Place, I would please ask that you would pass along my information on the business card. That's all I have. Thank you.
Questions or comments from Board members?
Just looks really nice. Definitely needed.
Yeah, definitely. We hope it can be a model to other, where the, this is the first time all of the different federal funding has come together this way, so we hope that it can be done in other places.
It'd be a great asset for our community.
Definitely.
Especially when you look at some of us, we. A few of us, anyway. A few of us, anyway.
Kristen, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, yeah, okay. And Mary's gonna introduce.
Then we have another delegation from the Virginia Association of Counties, and I think, Mary, you're gonna introduce this on the agenda.
Yeah, I'm gonna introduce Larry, and I went to the VACO website, and I found out things about Larry I didn't even know. So I thought, you know, if I didn't know him after working with this man for 18 years, I bet some of you didn't know him either. This is one of our dear faces of VACO. This man works so hard for us, day in and day out, especially during the General Assembly session. And Larry's job is, he's the Director of Policy Development for VACO, so he does the research and the lobbying for us, and helps inform us when we go down and lobby for basically environmental issues and public education, which are important to all of us. He also coordinates a lot of our VACO educational programs. They have to do when we go down for our annual conference, and we have the workshops and the seminars, and also some of us have attended the Chair's Institute. He's involved with that also. Now, Larry has served on several advisory committees that state agencies have appointed him to that specifically deal with environmental issues as waste management, water quality, and energy. He also, I found out, and I didn't know this, so I have to look at this specifically because I can't quote this whole thing here, he was appointed to the State Advisory Board to the Virginia Resources Research Center at Virginia Tech, I did not know that, by both Governor Warner and Governor King. He holds a master's degree from the Virginia Commonwealth University, a BA degree from Catawba College, which is in Salisbury, North Carolina, and he's served on the Board of Directors for the Virginia Society of Association Executives, and he has executive certification from the American Society of Association Executives. And so we want to welcome him, and we're very glad to hear Larry.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I was about to say, oh, shucks, ma'am. And then expect such a long introduction, but thank you very much for having me tonight. And again, the biggest reason I'm here, I really do enjoy getting out of the office in Richmond to visit about as many meetings held by Boards of Supervisors as I possibly can. I don't know how many, I really do think I'm probably up to maybe 200 Board meetings over the last few years. I know that I did visit Montgomery County once before, some of the people who are on the Board now are on the Board then. I don't want to say how many years that was, but it's a pleasure, definitely a pleasure being here. And of course, one of the most important reasons why we do attend meetings is not so much to talk, but really to sit, listen, and learn. It is an opportunity for us to learn about what you're discussing here. As you hold your Board meetings, it's especially important that we hear any public comments that your constituents may have. I think by learning about you, of course, we can serve you a whole lot better, so that's the basic reason why I'm here tonight. I did not plan to really stand up here for very long. Of course, for those in your audience who may not be familiar with the Virginia Association of Counties, we are a statewide organization. We have existed since 1934. We serve, we do represent, we like to say, all the counties of Virginia. Sometimes we may not have all of them, but we usually do, and all of them are very, very valuable to us, and I want to know that your membership with VACO is very valuable to us. Your participation with the Virginia Association of Counties and any of the committees that we convene is also very much appreciated and also very valuable to us, and I can, and I know that several of you are involved in our steering committees. To, just again, for the benefit of your constituents, I'll read our mission statement, which is, states that VACO exists to support county officials and to effectively represent, promote, and protect the interests of counties to better serve the people of Virginia. We do this through a number of different services that we provide. Of course, Mary, in your introduction, I mentioned advocacy, which is a very, very large part of our mission, which we do during the time when the General Assembly is in session. We also represent you when we are dealing with state agencies, and we also, also work with the National Association of Counties at the federal level. Another, another very important part of what we do is through our educational programs. Again, I think you heard a little bit about our Supervisor Certification Program, our Chair's Institute, the Annual Conference. We do hold other seminars throughout the year, which I hope that you do get a chance to participate in. And also through, I guess, as part, under that whole education umbrella, we do have our communications to your, our website, of course, is available. It's there, visible to the public as well as yourselves, at www.vaco.org. We have a number of publications that come out through the years, through the year, of course, County Connections being our semi-monthly newsletter during the session. And sometimes when the legislation is, when the legislative session is not taking place, we also have Capital Contact. Very important, especially during the session, for you to pay attention to this publication because it tries to provide the most up-to-date information that we possibly can provide on what is happening with the General Assembly. We, we're getting to the phase of the year where we're about ready to get started in developing our legislative program. Time is going by fast, and it's already July. It's hard to believe that, that the General Assembly adjourned, as recently as it seems to have adjourned in, well, after its week convening session in April, that it's really time to get started again. So if you have certain concerns that you want to bring to the attention of the Virginia Association of Counties, we recommend that you please do so, or any kind of issues that you would want to, that you would hope to have incorporated in our legislative program for consideration of any one of our eight steering committees, please submit that to us. On August 16th, we're going to be holding our summer meeting in Richmond, and that is when all of our eight steering committees will convene. I know that several of you are members of those committees, and again, very happy to have you there. Even if you're not a member of one of those committees, we welcome you to please attend because this is also intended to be a educational kind of a session. We're doing a little bit differently this year than we have done it in past years to try to hold meetings for the entire membership to attend, to hear about major issues that are affecting you. These will include things like the budget, of course, land use issues. I know stormwater is going to be one of the items on the agenda that we talked about earlier. So please stay tuned for this. This is a very important part of what we do. Again, just to get, I didn't talk enough about our enterprise programs that we have in addition to our advocacy and our, and our educational programs. These have really grown over the last few years, include things like deferred compensation, our VA Corp risk, VA Corp workers' compensation insurance, or lease purchase program, bond financing, electric rate negotiations, group litigations. We, we really do cover an awful lot of ground, and we're very happy to serve you in these capacities. But if there's any suggestions you have on how, on any services that you might be interested in us undertaking on your behalf, our doors are open. We want to hear those communications from you, and that's really why I'm here tonight. Did not want to take a long time on the agenda. Again, I'm here more to, as I always like to say, sit, listen, and learn, and I always try to remain at Board meetings for as long as I can because I feel the more I listen to what you, what you say to each other, the more you hear from your citizens, the more interaction I witness, I think the better I can serve you, and it is a privilege to do that, and I thank you for, for having me here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them. If not, I'll definitely pass them on to somebody on our staff who can.
Questions? Questions?
Comment?
Tell me.
I'd like to thank you again for coming. I think it's so important that, you know, the counties see the VACO staff out at, in their own environment, you know, instead of, you know, going to Richmond and that kind of thing, and thank you so much for making the trip and for all you do all the time. I mean, you're a tireless worker, and was it 25 years now? You've been at this, so.
Like I'm getting honored here, so anyway. Well, it's a privilege to do it.
I apologize for being late and coming in the middle, but I am delighted to hear the remainder of what you had to say this evening, but it's nice to see you, Larry.
Nice to see you, as always.
Thanks, Larry.
And thank you.
Okay, thank you.
See, we'll move on to public address. We have one person signed up to speak, Ms. Sherri Blevins.
Good evening, Board members. Sherri Blevins, I live at 2 Ford, Virginia Drive, Christiansburg, Virginia. I'm here, I'm here tonight to address the governor's grant money for resource officers in elementary schools. As you are aware, I've been advocating on behalf of Falling Branch Elementary School families and staff about the constant safety threats that we've had at that school with trespassers and unwanted visitors. I'm here tonight, as I understand, the Board may not be considering the towns of Christiansburg and Blacksburg for the placement of those resource officers, and if that is so, I am disappointed, and I'm here to hopefully persuade you to reconsider. There is a constant and urgent need at that particular school, Falling Branch. Over the last several years, there have been numerous, over 60 incidents with trespassers and unwanted visitors on the school property and in the school. So there sets forth a need, a direct need. As a citizen of Montgomery County and a citizen of the town Christiansburg, I feel that would be unfair to discriminate or to separate citizens from the town limits of Blacksburg and Christiansburg as being part of that grant money. We deserve the same services and protection for our children as anyone outside of the limits. And as I understand, with this grant money, if you guys accept it, which I want to applaud first Sheriff Witt and the department for applying for that, because any money for our schools, we want to take advantage of. So I'm not here to say we don't want the grant money for our schools, any Montgomery schools, we would be happy to have it, but there is an urgent need and priority with Falling Branch Elementary School. As I understand, the grant money would be, needed to be matched by the county. That means all citizens would pay taxes for funding that grant to match it, not just citizens outside the town limits of Christiansburg and Blacksburg. That would be unfair if you separate towns of Christiansburg and Blacksburg. We would still be paying the same tax, but we would not get the same services and benefits. As a taxpayer for the town Christiansburg and the county, I deserve the same services and my, and our families need the same protection. I wish and believe all schools, including elementary schools, to have resource officers, full-time resource officers as a constant and present deterrent against any threat to our children. I feel that there's a need, and I wish that for all schools. But please do not overlook the urgent need with Falling Branch due to the close proximity of the Park and Ride. Until the Park and Ride can be relocated, that school will constantly be a threat, so much so that the town of Christiansburg did step in and provided a police, a police officer there as, as to handle any immediate dangers or threats. Once the town time limit expired, the school board did put a security aide to monitor the front door to make sure that no unwanted visitors or trespassers would enter the school's front doors. So we're very grateful for that, but we need to continue to proceed with safety measures that we can secure that entrance of that school and with a constant need. As you are considering on the grant money, please make sure that you are taking in consideration what is best for all of your citizens, not just the citizens outside of town Christiansburg and Blacksburg, and please take in the priority need and urgent threat that there exists at Falling Branch Elementary School. I just, again, I would just ask you guys to reconsider, there is an urgent need at that school. I think that's all, so I thank you for your consideration. Falling Branch Elementary School needs your support, and we need to know, and we, as a citizen, we need to know all citizens are treated fairly. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it anyone else in the, that's the only person we have signed up, but is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on the public address? Any issue involving the government of Montgomery County? If not, then we will close our public address session. No addendum?
Yes, sir.
Consent agenda?
I'm moved.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Five ayes.
New business, subject A, resolution approving VDOT standard project administration agreement for payment overlay on Old Sourwood Road.
So moved.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Subject B, proclamation designating the month of July as Parks and Recreation Month.
So moved.
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Okay, I'm sort of, I lost my place here. It's like sort of, sort of moves on me. Okay, I didn't get back where I'm supposed to be, but, okay. Subject C, resolution of appreciation. Resolution of appreciation for Jean Height, Montgomery Regional Library Board?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Yeah, I'm for two.
Just, we're gonna really miss him.
Okay.
Yeah, but he, he's going to a really good job there, so.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Okay. Subject D, resolution of appreciation, Kathy Wooline Hubbard, New River Valley Community Services Board.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Six ayes?
Subject E, resolution of appreciation for William Greenberg.
So moved.
Second.
And can I just say that when we, these two people that are leaving the board have so much history with the board and they've done such a good job, they're going to be greatly missed, having both of them leaving at the same time.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Bix?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Six ayes?
Now, it is time for the county attorney's report.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to give the board a quick update on the Right Way issue with the Black Hole and the education center. There you go, sorry. As you know, I think we let everyone know by email that the, the zoning administrator issued a notice of violation and also ordered all work to stop. The notice of violation was, was delivered to both the property owner and the agent for AT&amp;T who's involved in the deal, the contractor, which is a company out of North Carolina. And so, and we made sure that they, that they all received that. We communicated with the contractor. The contractor advised us that he would know, he wouldn't do any more work until the situation was resolved. Derry went out there today and checked, and in fact, no, no other work has occurred on site. She also confirmed, appeared to her, no activity had occurred. And she confirmed that with one of the property owners, that they had not seen any activity. So, so at this point, it's under control. It's up to the, to the contractor or property owner to appeal the determination. As of today, they had not appealed it, and they have 30 days to appeal it. And that decision, the appeal date will run on July 25th. So we'll, we'll let you know if we hear anything different. If they do file a appeal, we'll let everyone know by email.
Okay. But I understand they've, what, dug a big hole out there and all that stuff?
Yeah.
But, but if they, if they lose, they would have to go back and fill in the hole and do everything else, I guess, right?
Yeah, I would think they fill in the hole because of liability.
Right.
Yeah. And I think right now they got, they actually have something around it to protect anyone from walking into that hole. But yeah, I think they would probably fill it for liability purposes.
Is that, is that it, Mr. Attorney?
That's it, Mr. Chair.
Okay, now for the county administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a couple items to bring to the board's attention this evening. First, I wanted to mention to you something that I passed along in a county administrator's report a couple of weeks ago, and this is regarding notice of a proposed lease from the Department of Corrections. The county received a notice from the DOC that they are considering executing a lease for a probation and parole office, office located in the 2300 block of Tyler Road. The county does have the right to ask for a public hearing on this if we think one is needed. In the staff report, I indicated we didn't think there was a need, but would certainly follow the board's direction. After that was sent out, we took a little closer look at the property that they're discussing for a proposed probation and parole office, and it's the property immediately adjacent to our ball field. And so, that raises some concern about a probation and parole office being located adjacent to a, to a park, if you will. And I think that certainly changes staff's recommendation about a public hearing. You do have to adopt a resolution to request a public hearing, but I would like to suggest that under board comments this evening, if one of you thinks that's appropriate, that you, and it can be a simple resolution, just basically stating that due to the location of the proposed office adjacent to our park facility, you do feel the Department of Corrections should hold a public hearing for that, and that will get the ball rolling for them to set a date, and then we'll work on comments for that. But I wanted to mention that, that I think that's something we need to, we need to pursue. Also wanted to mention a couple of meetings this week. I will be meeting with the district administrator from VDOT tomorrow afternoon at 1:30 to talk about several VDOT issues in the county, including the park and ride lot, and having some discussion about alternatives and opportunities there. Mr. Carey actually indicated that they are very concerned about that situation as well, and want to see what can be done to help address that. So, he and I will be meeting tomorrow afternoon. I also have a meeting with the two town managers on Wednesday afternoon to talk about the school resource officer issue that we talked about last meeting. They have been discussing the concerns, I think, with their town councils, and the three of us are going to meet Wednesday to discuss how we move forward and what our recommendations may be to, to the respective boards. So, we'll be meeting on Wednesday for that. Also wanted to remind folks that are interested in the auction of the surplus county properties, that that auction is scheduled for this Friday at 12 noon in this room here at the county administration building. We have several parcels that the board has deemed surplus, the largest of which is the old Elliston Lafayette Elementary School property. So, we're very hopeful that there'll be some interest in, in those properties, and that auction will take place Friday at noon. I also wanted to mention to you, I sent an email out on this last week, but I wanted to bring it up just to make sure that you've got it on your calendar, or make sure there's not a conflict. It looks like the best date for the road viewers tour, which is where we all get together and go view the, the roads in the county that are on the proposed six-year plan, and also look at any other areas of concern that the board may have. Looks like the best date, based on the information we received back from the board, is for that to occur on Friday, July 26th. I think that's two weeks from this coming Friday. And we do need to start that at 8:30. I know Supervisor Tuck, you had mentioned later in the day, but everybody else needed to go earlier, so.
I understand. The needs of the many outweigh the needs of the few.
Yes, sir.
But could you join us, though? Like, sometimes that's happened in the past, like people have tagged on.
If my court obligations do not require me to be present, I'll see what I can do.
And we can certainly meet you along the way if you were to complete that early. And, and the last thing I'll just say is, again, Larry, it's very good to have you here this evening. And normally, we don't get to this part of the agenda till about 9:30 or 10 o'clock, so considering it's 7:45, we'll celebrate that next time I see you in Richmond. And that's all I have.
Okay. Board members report. Supervisor Perkins.
Okay. I did attend two meetings after our last board meeting, which was the Alliance Dinner. I just thought I'd mention it because it was very interesting. We met in Pulaski in the train station, which they have redone.
Oh, that's nice.
And it's amazing what they could do. And then, we were given a tour of the Transportation Museum, which is just across the street from the old train station that, that they rented, well, actually, they almost had to tear it down and start from scratch because it did burn. But if you haven't been to the Pulaski Transportation Museum, I think it would be an interesting visit. I found out a lot of things there about people and individuals, and there's, of course, that humongous, shall we, what is it, a model train, we would say, set up, takes up a whole room, or one part of a room, covers the whole thing. It's the town of Pulaski, which escapes me now. The, I believe it was a dentist, but it was a doctor there in Pulaski. And how in the world he got all of that together is just remarkable. But that within itself, so anybody who's a model train enthusiast and builds those kinds of things, it is a fantastic, I would say, exhibition. But at the same time, reading about the importance of rail transportation, as I went along through the museum, I didn't really have enough time to, to look at all of it. So, I really would like to go back and just look at it again, because I think it, it holds a wealth of information about this area of the New River Valley, and how important trains were, and the whole train situation there in Pulaski, as well as, as to this county. And, you know, for a long time, we've been working to try to get passenger trains through here and a lot of other things. So, I just thought that that was a very interesting and good way to have a meeting, rather than, you know, just sit and listen to reports, what have you. So, I thoroughly enjoyed that. And then the other meeting, of course, I attended was the MPO in Roanoke during the day. And again, we just continued to talk about whatever MPOs need to do. And then we all, then that evening, I did attend the PDC meeting. And you all get, if it hasn't already come out, you will get a copy of the minutes. I, I think you've got it.
I try to forward those when I get them, so.
Right. So, you'll have those. And then this coming week, I do have the airport meeting. I hope to have some good information there about how we're moving forward with the extension of the runway. I believe the environmental assessment is pretty much done again, because we had to do that two times since we were trying to save the trees over there. And then, so I'll have some information about that later. Also, I will attend Pepper's Ferry this Thursday. And that, of course, will, is what we usually talk about is, of course, the wastewater treatment. And that goes on in, in that area, the kind of, the New River Valley. So, thank you very much. If there's any, if there's a question I can answer, I'll be happy to do it. But at this point, I think I've told you what I know.
Thank you. Supervisor Biggs.
Okay, I guess first of all, you need a motion to, to have a public hearing for the Department of Corrections request?
Yes, ma'am, my resolution.
So, I guess I can make that motion?
Second.
Second, okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Bix?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Six ayes?
Thank you. We'll get, we'll get that letter out tomorrow. Thank you.
Can I ask a question with clarification on the, the public hearing? Would that public hearing be here, or would it be run by the Department of Corrections?
It will, it will be run by the Department of Corrections. So, I will encourage them to have that here, but that'll be up to them.
Okay. It would be nice, since it's in Montgomery County, and the citizens that would be commenting would be in Montgomery County, you know, and not in Richmond somewhere.
I think it would be, yeah.
Certainly remind them of that.
Then, secondly, as I talked to you, you all earlier, and just to inform the public that at our next meeting, July 22nd, hopefully, we'll be having a work session on the animal shelter. So, if anyone has not had a chance to go by and visit lately, that might be good to do before we have our meeting. Otherwise, I guess we could do it on the road tour, but, but, you know, that's like four days later. But anyway, so that's coming up. I'm glad that you're gonna be finding out about the SRO officers. And I guess you'll be like, letting us know how that goes.
Absolutely.
Because that's been a big concern, you know, like what's gonna happen to those seven other elementary schools in the, in the county. And the last thing is, those of you that know where our community services board building is located, over there on University Boulevard in Blacksburg, might know also that there's a development that's being proposed for the Holiday Inn area there. And that proposed development, they've had some community meetings about, and they canceled the planning commission meeting that they were gonna have to get some more input. But the community services building and staff, the board there, too, were, we were concerned about the fact that one of the ways in and out, that proposed project would be through sort of the parking area there. And that parking area is used all the time by clients, and in fact, staff don't even park in the parking lot, they park across. And so, I think that, you know, that, that, that has been expressed back to the people that are working on the project. So, I think they'll continue to go to the, the public, the planning commission hearings on it. And that's about all I know on that. So, that's it.
Okay. Supervisor Tuck?
I was just wondering.
I thought you was ready to just be anywhere. You know, I thought you, I'd had a question for Mary.
Go ahead, yes.
Go ahead.
There's a few things that primarily they deal with the SRO offices and officers, and some questions to the staff to get, gather some information. One, as I understand, is the primary law enforcement responsibilities within the towns fall within the towns and outside fall within the county. However, I would like to know throughout the Commonwealth, who normally provides those SRO officers, if that would be possible to gather that information. And four, the schools that are located within the towns, are those normally provided? Is this something unique to Montgomery County, or is this something that is standardized throughout? And when you're meeting with the towns, I would ask that you inquire if this board adopted and put the, accepted the grant money that the sheriff applied for, if they are going to go ahead and follow through and provide the SRO officers and the seven elementary schools that are within the towns. I would also like an assessment of projected, if this is available, if this information is available, response times from law enforcement to all of the elementary schools, including town law enforcement. Also taking into account the deputies at SRO officers that are very close, such as Auburn is, is going to have three schools very close together. Kips, Blackford Middle School, Blackford High School, are all very close together, within a few hundred yards of one another. Is there a way that we could float an SRO officer between two different schools and the like, and, and to, to address some of the concerns? And also, an evaluation of which elementary schools of the four are in the greatest need of adding a, taking into consideration response times, proximity to other schools, and as I said, SRO, SRO officers, and any other securities. And finally, how many town residents attend, as I understand at Bellevue, quite a few Christiansburg residents attend Bellevue, as well as I believe there are a few Blacksburg residents that attend Proxess Fork Elementary School. But if we could get some numbers in regards to that, I would greatly appreciate it. But other than that, that would be my report.
Agreed.
Sounds like a lot.
Yeah. Supervisor Gabriel.
Thank you. The school board, as I think I mentioned in the last meeting, doesn't meet during the month of July, and so I don't have any meetings to report there. I did want to thank the staff, and Marty especially, for the update on the Right Way project. And I'm glad that, that seems to be, being settled. So, thank you.
Mr. Creed?
Yeah, I just wanna kind of follow up on what Chris just said, but in a little different fashion. And it is my opinion, and that's strictly my opinion, that Falling Branch has a special need over and above what any of our elementary schools have right now. They have been infiltrated, you might say, with unwanted guests, and that's not a good thing to have in, in a school. And whatever it takes, we don't need to start a new school year without having a resource officer there in some form, fashion. So, that just seems to be a, a no-brainer. You know, we can build schools because people are scared to put their children back in schools. And if we can do that, we can surely have a resource officer for schools in which parents are scared to put their children back in schools. So, it seems to me that that would be a small amount to pay when you consider how much you give one against what you give the other. So, I'd just like to see us put the highest priorities on that, and see what we can come up with. So.
So, I guess it's left up to me. Only, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Creed, but what I understand, the way the grant is, is that, that's already been presented to the county for acceptance, if they'd like to accept it, is that it is school-specific. I mean, it has to be in those four schools.
And I understand that. The only thing that I understand is that this is a The only thing that I was saying is that this is a special need over and above what the other schools have. Whether we even have resource officers or not through the grant, for anybody, I think they should be taken care of. That's my point.
Oh, okay. And I have no report to make, and.
Nothing on hemp?
Any?
Nothing on hemp?
Yeah. Any other comments?
You're like a motion for a German or something? Seems like a little tweeny bird, so it said, "We need a germ."
You can just say a germ.
Yeah, but I like to do it this way.
I just have a question. Do you guys meet with the school people during the summer?
Yes, we have a meeting scheduled for Thursday.
Is anyone gonna update us on how they're gonna secure the schools in the fall? Because it's getting like nearby.
One of the items on the agenda is school security for Thursday.
Okay, because as far as I know, the doors are still open, and I just wondered if, and then my only other comment is, and I guess I'd be remiss if I didn't say this, but when we talk about response times, we also need to maybe look at where incidents have happened in the past, and not to say they couldn't happen in any school, but two major incidents have happened in Blacksburg, the Virginia Tech tragedy and Morva. Just to remind people where those happened.
Absolutely, and I will say that the meeting is scheduled for when? Thursday, but I also know that the board chair mentioned something about another medical appointment Thursday, so that may be tentative, but I'll let you know.
Okay, thanks.
There was one thing that we came up through our agenda, and that was a poly pavement, and Jim's not here, but he has been someone who has moved that.
That's right.
That could be something that ends up saving this county hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars, and while he has a family emergency, I just wanted to recognize the work that he has done in regards to that poly pavement.
That's good.
It's anonymous with dirt glue, right?
Dirt glue, poly pavement. You say tomato, I say tomato.
Hey, things are deteriorating, so we're.